Good afternoon, I'd like to call the November fourteenth work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. We, I'd like to welcome everybody that's here, and if Nancy Roach would lead us in the invocation and pledge, if everybody would rise.
I'd like to read a Veterans Day prayer today in honor of Veterans Day, which was on Monday, by Joanna Fuchs. Dear Lord, we honor our veterans, worthy men and women who gave their best when they were called upon to serve and protect our country. We pray that you will bless them for their unselfish service in the continual struggle to preserve our freedoms, our safety, and our country's heritage for all of us. Bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, and for their many different contributions to American victories over tyranny and oppression. We respect them, we thank them, we honor them, we are proud of them, and we pray that you will watch over and bless all of us with peace and happiness. In your name we pray, amen. Now please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Tom, and a second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, next we have the presentation and discussion items, and the first is the 2014-15 student calendar with Mr. Perkel. Good afternoon, how are you?
Good.
It's almost over, Joey.
It's almost over, you're right. Okay, the calendar, the 2014-15 student calendar, we received five hundred and fifteen comments regarding the student calendar, and I've mentioned to you in your information that I put on Eboard that, that's very low considering we have over forty thousand students, and considering we have the number of staff members that we have, so this, so that's really, really low. So that kind of says to me, either folks are okay with the calendar, or they're okay enough that they're not willing to make any comments about it.
No news is good news.
So, right. So given that, we typically get, and we got the things that we typically do get regarding the school calendar, and that is to start later, have a fall break, make sure that you end when we end, early release days to get rid of those, or either move those to Fridays. So those are typically the things that we have gotten over the last several years, and that's typically what we, we got with the few comments that we did get. We did get several comments saying that they liked it, so there were a few of those as well. So based on that, my recommendation would be to keep the draft as it is with there's, with one exception, and that is the high school principals all met and all concurred that they did not want to continue being included in with the early release conference days in October. We do still require all of our elementary school teachers to have conferences, required conferences with all their parents in the fall, and middle schools with, certainly we encourage their, those principals encourage their teachers to have conferences with students that are in need of, are struggling academically and those kinds of things. So the high school, so, so the only change I would recommend for next week with the approval of, for the calendar would be to change the October fifteenth and sixteenth from K-12, and move that back to what we did several year, a few years ago, which was K-8. And that's what we did up until a couple of years ago, and we included the high schools. They felt that they may want to try that, and now that they've tried that, they're like, mm, we don't really need that, and we'll keep our kids in school on those days and not have conference, not have conference days. So that would be my recommendation. It also, we put that staff development day on, at the end of that, which, you know, for any parent that wanted to, if they so chose to do so, they certainly could take off a half a day on Thursday and all day on Friday, and have a relatively long weekend, so they could have, you know, half a day Thursday and all of Friday, of course Saturday and Sunday, and that, so that's, that's not a full week and a fall break, but that's, at least it's something. So anyway, so my, that's the calendar input, and, and I'm only going to recommend myself, I'm only going to make that one recommendation, to change the early release from K-12 to K-8.
But they want to keep the early release in March, for the high school level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we did, and we did move the September, if you can see, we did have, we do have September the twenty-sixth early release day, that is on a Friday. We typically, we haven't done that before, so we're going to try that.
But I understand there was testing or something.
They're right, because there was a test, so in, right, we could have moved it up to the seventeenth, but we chose to just move it over to a Friday, and we'll try that. Of course, we have the March, the one in March is on Friday as well.
So you'll look at attendance that day?
Right.
Having it on the seventeenth, which was originally, they were proposing, puts it pretty close to the one that's in August, so this way it makes it almost exactly a month apart, so it kind of breaks it up a little bit better.
Right, it's not, they're not so close together, that way.
Give us a good test of what it's like on Friday. Mr. Perkel, one of the other things that comes up as often is the spring break in conjunction with coming back and taking CRCTs. I believe, I think I'm hearing, been hearing lately, the state are looking at possibly moving CRCT, or whatever it's going to be, perhaps a little farther into April, so it might not be as big of a problem, there'll be a bigger gap, and also teachers would have a little bit more time to teach. Is that still, is that going on somewhere?
Beth, I have not, Beth and Kiefer and myself, we have, we've not had that conversation regarding the calendar, so I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if Dr. Evans has anything about that.
Do you know when it's scheduled next year?
The CRCT, they're scheduled for, I think it starts the week of April the twentieth.
Oh, that's not bad.
Oh, so that gives you a whole week.
That is a whole week.
I believe.
You have a window sufficiently enough that we can actually come back, that entire week of the thirteenth, and then if you want to so start on the twentieth, you still have a two-week period window of time, along with a last week into May for going there, so you get four weeks during that time. We should be fine with that.
We put it as far back as possible, but it doesn't go to the end of the window because we try to make sure that we can get the test results back in time to remediate and retest those that didn't pass before the end of the school year, or in middle school's case, before the end of post-class. So we can't go to the end of the test window and do that.
But it's not just like the day or two after they come back from spring break, they'll be back several days before?
I'm certain it's not the thirteenth and fourteenth, it would not be, I just, I have to look up the dates, I'll list those up, let you know when it's there.
Okay. Are we good? Anybody else have any calendar? And the vote, I believe, is next week. So now we can move on to the redistricting discussion, still with Mr. Perkel, his two favorite things.
We did the redistricting committee, we did meet and review all of the online feedback for draft two, as well as going back to review all of the feedback from the public, both of the public forums, and I will add that we, as you well know, obviously, you all were there, so that, we had only, I think, eight, eight folks who signed up at one public forum, and three, I think, at the second public forum, which was relatively low compared to previous years when we've done redistricting. So after reviewing all of the, the online feedback, and we only had, I think, a hundred and sixty-nine comments on this second round, I believe it was, for draft two, and then the, the two public forums, the committee, and after we looked at all that and we discussed all of that, the committee has, does not have any recommendations or any recommended changes to the current draft two. We, we recommend that we keep the district lines as they are in draft two, and that would be our, as, as a committee, that would be our recommendation, based on all of the feedback that we reviewed.
And that's based on the concern that Dave's Creek is going to be, even though we're relieving it because of the four or five subdivisions that are going in there, it's going to be crowded again before we know it.
Okay. All right, well, we have talked about a lot of this, there's been a few areas that have continued to come up after reading through the last round of input, I think there's some of them we just might want to go through that are more straightforward, and there's others maybe we could end up with that are a little bit more of a challenge. I read, like, for example, the Bluffs is one that comes up quite a bit.
And they also spoke.
And there, actually, there was a mix, some of them, in the comments that came in in the second round.
Right.
There was actually a mix of, I'd say, half that wanted to stay and half that did not, it was a little different than the last time, but the problem with the Bluffs, I dropped that other map, they, you'd have to, if they came over, you'd have to pass other subdivisions that are not, and they're so far over that it would be almost a guarantee with the new school, there'd be a double switch, which is something that we try to avoid as much as possible.
That's correct, yes.
I think Hanover Point's the one that knows that they, they were kind of willing to take that leap, but.
Knowing that they're going to be moved to the new.
Yeah. So that was one that came, but there was actually eighteen comments from the Bluffs, which is more than last time total, but I still think, they're just too far over. I'm just reading through my notes.
Right.
Let's come back to that. Just going through. We had a mixture from Laurel Springs of comments, actually, most were in favor of the move, as far as middle schools. There were some that were not, although people realized in proximity they were very close to South Metal.
Right, and we have to relieve Riverwatch, so we don't really have a choice.
There wasn't, that's just that there's no other option than Laurel Springs, they're right there. Another one that's come up, bring out my other map here, Nancy, is the Stonies.
Okay, the Stony Points.
The Ridge, the Stony Points, we did have a number of comments from them again this time, let me see. And to clarify, we did have several comments, more than twenty some odd in the first round, they were just separated in our data because they came in as different names, where it be at The Ridge, or The Ridge is Stony Point, or whatever, so we knew numerically together they combined, but they just alphabetically came out separately.
I think we looked at alternatives, but Creekstone had way too many kids to be moved, and the numbers there, and we don't see them moving back to Shiloh Point, I think that was a concern also, that they will stay because Big Creek, some of the Big Creek to the west will be going to the new school, so some of them will be moving back, so Big Creek will need those, those students.
That was one of their biggest concerns in the comments this time around, they didn't want to move twice, and, well, we can't guarantee so far out, we really don't think, we don't think there's likely to be a double move.
It's just not logical.
Because Big Creek's going to need to be backfilled in, in the future.
Right.
So, struggle with that one, but. We did have some people asking about siblings of rising fifth and eighth, but I think that's a tough topic, if you allow siblings to go, then odds are, nobody's going to, the redistricting won't work, that fair assumption?
That is a fair assumption, and, and we, you know, we've, we've never done that for that reason. We, we understand totally, and get and understand that if, you know, a, a family could have a fifth grader that year in one school, and say a first grader in a different school for that one year only, but, you know, I mean, they do have the option of having them both in the same school if they do that, but it's just, we just, we, we haven't done that, we've just always said, you know, we'll, we'll let you apply for your rising fifth grader, or your rising eighth grader to stay. Where we have made, where, where we did make exceptions to that, obviously, was in years past when we've redistricted with the high school. But I think we all understood that you get into a whole different realm when you have, when those kids are in high school, if they're in the tenth grade, they, at that point in time, they could be well established into an organization like the band, or club, or something like that.
Spent a lot of money already.
And have already spent, you know, a couple thousand dollars and those kinds of things, and there, there's just a diff, there's just a different level of investment at the high school level than there is at the elementary or the middle school level. And it's not, it's not going to be as much at the middle school level, because you're only talking about three, a span of three grades. Where there's going to be more people, where that's going to affect more people will be at the elementary school level, because, you know, there's a bigger, that's K-five, instead of three grades, there's six grades. You see what I'm saying? But we haven't, we have not extended that to.
Never done that before? Never done that before? Okay. All right. I think I have one, do you have any others, other than the last, Sharon? The other one that I think has probably given us the most angst, I'd say, is the struggle, is the, we'll call it the Sharon-Walk area, and their concerns, there's several subdivisions along Old Atlanta Road and down Sharon, that have been with Dave's Creek since, since it opened, and have obviously spent a lot of time there, building the school. And the growth around that area, not only that is there now, but is anticipated, kind of north, well, a mixture, but also north of Dave's Creek, off of Old Atlanta, is going to keep coming. So what we struggled with, they had banded together as a group, and they wanted to take all the, we'll call it the older subdivisions, the majority of them old, some of them new, and swap it out for what we have been calling East James Creek. Numerically, they were pretty close. The struggle that, that I think staff saw, that we saw, was James Creek, the large subdivision, is just a little over half a mile from Dave's Creek Elementary.
You can walk.
And there's sidewalks, they can walk to the school, so it's hard to pull the school out, a subdivision out that is staring at the school. In the same token, I really do understand their concerns. When we look at Old Atlanta, we've been thinking of this group of subdivisions, all the way from Ivy Falls, to Northern Oaks, to the Estates, to Brentwood, Sharon Springs, Sharon Walk, and they go all the way down. If you look at them separately, on Old Atlanta Road, around the corner from Dave's Creek, the first subdivision that's on the border is Ivy Falls, which is an older existing subdivision, has been there. They have twenty students, minus.
Do you know how many houses they have?
It's a decent sized subdivision.
It's a pretty big land area.
Pretty big land, again, it's an older subdivision, so they're not, they don't have quite as many elementary as say, you know, proportionately.
That's what I wondered, if they had, next year they might have forty students, you know, I wonder.
You don't know.
You don't know, but I, I would think generally speaking.
But it's not a huge subdivision.
It's a decent size, but it's, you know, traditionally, the brand-new builds tend to have more of the younger, so that one has twenty. We looked at trying to figure out, how, you know, could you bring in some of the older ones, could we keep them there? With twenty students, minus some portion, say, some small number of fifth graders staying, so say you called it fifteen, so if we brought them over, that's not a lot, if we kept them in Dave's Creek, it's not a, not a huge number out of the total that we need to move out of Dave's Creek. If we go farther than that, one of the other subdivisions that felt strongly, Northern Oaks, like another older one, they're farther down, but you have to pass two other subdivisions, Brentwood and Old Atlanta Estates. The problem is, if you add all those in, it comes to like a hundred students, which there's no way, because we have to.
Do something.
Get students, students out of Dave's Creek, right. I think one of the problems, where, is they came to us as a group, their proposal was to, you know, move James Creek, that section of it, versus moving us, so we didn't really look at them individually, I think was the thing, too, which is what we've been doing lately. Even in their own, and so we, we say, too, we don't like to split subdivisions, we did with Windermere, but we considered that a development, because it was fifteen subdivisions. But James Creek is considered James Creek, and even in the letter from this Sharon-Walk, they said, their subsection of their neighborhood, meaning James Creek, you know, pick them instead. Well, I put myself in the position of the James Creek person that was living there, saying, why would you choose a subsection of my subdivision and move us versus moving, you know, all of the Sharon-Walk area? And to me, that's not really fair, to say, okay, we're going to pick somebody that's old, and we're, we're going to, you know, the new people are coming, but so we're going to make you ride the bus farther and be, you know, farther away, so I don't see the fairness there. Because even, again, in the James Creek, in the Sharon-Walk letter, they say, we know redistricting is first about head count, then logistics and geography, but with all else equal, well, they're not really equal, I don't see them as equal, I see them as so much closer to the fact they can walk there, so they're not equal. If they were totally equal, yes, I think then the years there and that they've put into Dave's Creek really would come into my decision, but the fact that, to me, geography-wise is essentially, and head count and everything, they're just, they're not equal. So to me, I feel that James Creek really deserves to stay together and be able to be a, and I remember years ago saying, if James Creek gets totally built out and all that, they could essentially take over Dave's Creek, just James Creek could, because they're so big, and especially now with townhomes going in and not just big houses, it's even more.
The other thing about Ivy Falls is it directly is across from Margate, and would be a direct, an easy cutoff.
Because Margate's staying.
Margate is staying at Dave's Creek, and right across the street is Ivy Falls.
Also, if you look at the driving distance from Dave's Creek Elementary, if you go left to Ivy Falls, it's one point one miles to get to Ivy Falls, start of their subdivision. If you go right out of Dave's Creek and go to James Creek subdivision, it's point seven miles to the first entrance, but they have three, so by the time you get to their middle and their third, you're at one point one, if not more. So the end of their subdivision and their other entrances are the same, if not a little bit more than Ivy Falls. So to me, they are a little more and more equal, distance-wise and travel-wise.
Just that one subdivision, not just Ivy Falls.
If, if Ivy Falls was fifty students or a hundred students, I think it'd be a different story, but since we're talking, in reality, fifty, fifteen, excuse me, I think it's worth considering keeping them in there. The downside is, I, I know I'm talking all over the pros and cons, in the future, I don't know what's going to happen, because we do know there's more development coming up the street, off of Old Atlanta, that is currently zoned into Dave's Creek. In two years, we don't know, I don't know, that's.
Well, see, and that's one of the things, we didn't have, need to move Ivy Falls, and so then you're moving, 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 and everybody hates that.
It is horrible, we've also looked at the future of Big Creek and Shiloh, in two years, how they could morph and change and come over as, as we get into the, over in the Brandon area, so.
Looking at that big picture, too, it seems like, and I may be off crystal, you know this more than anybody, but the number of new subdivisions that are going to be feeding into Sharon are, what, at least three? Three or four?
And more, yeah.
Yeah, that are coming. So Sharon is going to be in a difficult place.
We have Sharon, and then, but there were also, we're going to be in the pickle with even Nichols Road.
Right.
Which is borderline, goes down, part of it goes one way, and is shifting, and then part of it goes down towards Saddle, so.
Right.
Again, they're all going to be overcrowded again, and have, be having trailers, unfortunately.
I wish we could look at all the, I'll call it the old subdivisions, but quantitative, we can't, we can't move on, we can't.
Right.
Dave's Creek needs relief now. So I think numerically and logistically, and equity as far as travel distance from James Creek versus Old Atlanta Road, I think Ivy Falls is worth considering keeping in Dave's Creek, being as a minimal impact, and distance-wise, it's the same.
Because if it did move, it would be logically, if all these subdivisions come to fruition, they're all going to be redist, not all, but there will be redistricting, depending on if that ever happens. It won't be anytime soon, but I would not see Dave's, Ivy Falls moving from Dave's Creek, but you can't say never.
The hard thing is, the property can be zoned, but it doesn't mean it's built.
Right.
And we're in that scenario with the ones right across from Lambert right now, there's some that's been zoned since two thousand and five and still wooded, and then there's another one next door that's probably going to hit the ground running soon, so it's very hard for us to predict what really is going to be built out.
Mm-hmm.
But we have to kind of, I want to say, assume the worst, but assume more than less. Okay.
No, I didn't see any feeder pattern, changes with them either, if that happened, so.
Oh, that's a good point.
I was looking back here between that and middle school, because that's the only key one that matters in that case, and Dave's Creek's pretty much split between south and Do they stay where they're at? Because they're down here? That half of Dave's Creek?
Well, Mr. Perkel, if we wanted to make a recommendation to possibly keep that, do we have to do that now? How do we do?
No, what my, I think, what my plan would be, would be to, because obviously, this is just for our and your discussion, and next week you will be approving the district line, so I think between now and next week, that gives you time to think about, you all, what your discussion was, you know what our recommendation as the committee is. Next week, we would make, I'll make a recommendation from the committee, and then, or I'll ask the, excuse me, I will not make a recommendation, I'll ask the superintendent to make a recommendation. And then that will give you an opportunity, when there's a, a motion and a second, then we also have discussion.
And amend it.
And then, at that point in time, if anything changes, I mean, it's your decision.
Okay.
As a board to vote.
A little more time to think about it.
If, if that, I mean, that's my plan.
Well, and maybe if people do listen to this meeting, we'll get some input, even just personal emails this week, saying, no, we'd like to, we came as a, as a, as a group, as a Sharon-Walk area, and we'd like to stay as a group, you know, and whether they're all or nothing, or if the Ivy Falls people would say, no, please leave us, even if, even if that is the cutoff point, it would be nice to get some input.
Well, then they probably would say that.
I think we, well, I think we had twenty, we did have, in the second round of redistricting, we had twenty-two comments from Ivy Falls, that basically, many of them said, hey, you know, we love our group, but what about us?
Yeah, yeah, keep us if we can.
And we did get, we did get ten from Northern Oaks, who said the same, which is, the two, in my mind, is hard, you want to put them together, but there's other subdivisions in between, and the numbers.
Right, I think Ivy Falls would be the only consideration.
I've been at Dave's Creek, at their LLC recently, and seeing the mobiles, and, and listening to their growth issues, they need help.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
Okay, next we have Continuous Improvement Process with Jennifer Kratslo. How are you today?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Okay, I know this is a lot of data, so if you want to follow through while I'm discussing this and look at a few things, you can get to it by either going to our website and doing the dropdown with the strategic plan, or you can go to our website and do forward slash continuous improvement. Okay. You know, one of the things, whenever we did district accreditation, that they came back for, we had four areas that were highly functional, and then we had three areas that were operational, and one of the areas that was operational was continuous improvement. And so as part of our work last year for the strategic plan, we were very aware of that, and whenever we approved the strategic plan, one of the four areas of focus was continuous improvement. So I just very briefly wanted to go over with you what we as a staff have been working on, and I know that you saw a glimpse of it at the administrative retreat, and so I'm just going to pull up the continuous improvement timeline. I'm going to touch on some highlights here from what we've worked on. So a small committee of us at the district office got together in March as we were seeing the direction of the strategic plan, and started talking about the transition from the AIM, which were the school improvement plans, to the district continuous improvement process. And whenever we started having that conversation, we came around to district accreditation, and even though we just went through that in two thousand and twelve, our next district accreditation will be in two thousand and seventeen, which will be at the end of our strategic plan, it's every five years. And so we thought we really need to start considering that as we're working through our strategic plan, especially since Advanced Ed has changed from seven standards to five standards. And they really upped those standards in the indicators, so we started looking at them and saying, you know, we love to exceed the standards, but whenever we're being truthful and looking at some of these standards, we're not quite there, so let's start working on this now, so whenever we do district accreditation, we will be aligned with them. So that's whenever we had the conversation as a committee about, let's pull in district accreditation into the continuous improvement process, because you know, through the process we talked about, a Because you know, through the process, we talked about aligning everything we do into one process. So that's whenever we started talking about making connections. And on that continuous improvement website, you'll see a chart that we went through and aligned the five advanced ed standards and put everything in underneath, including the strategic plan, CCRPI, what we're doing with GAPS, how our Title I schools fit into as well. So that was kind of an aha moment for the district, and it helped the schools, too, as they started to build their continuous improvement plans, that they could see how everything aligned up. So as a district committee, we redid the school improvement plan format. We created department plan formats, and then we even looked at a professional learning plan that we had done and reformatted that, too, so that all the, all those documents aligned together. And so what we did is we came back this summer, and we shared that with our principals, and they started having their conversation with their staffs, and so they started working on their continuous improvement plans. And then we, as a cabinet, basically, truthfully, for the first time, sat down collectively as a group and reread all of the executive summaries of the schools. Because we changed the way that we operate, and instead of us having district department plans created separately from the school improvement plans, we decided first to have the school improvement plans drive what we're doing for the district department plans. So that was a great conversation for us, and you'll see a document on that website, too, that what we did as a cabinet then is that we went through and we organized by elementary, middle, and high schools what every school was working on. So we took all of the CCRPI work and said, okay, five of these schools are working on CCRPIs. How does that align to what we're doing as district departments? So we created a document on the website that's divided by those three levels that shows you how we as district departments are going to support the schools, and then also how it aligns to the accreditation standards, too, as well. And then we pulled in our principals this fall, and we put them in clusters based on their feeder high school pattern. And we said, let's start sharing what you're doing for your school improvement process. So that way, they could see at the high school level, this is what they're working on, and these are the challenges. Well, this is what they're working on at the middle school level that feeds into the high school level, and then so on to the elementary school level. So we did two series of meetings for that, because we know some of our middle schools and some of our elementary schools feed into multiple schools. So we also pulled out our assistant principals and had them do some work on that. So I loaded that document today. That's a new document that you'll see. It's organized by high schools, what they're all working on and how that aligns up. And so since that time, the departments have created their department improvement plans, and you'll see those posted online. And to create those, they actually looked at the advanced ed standards, the school improvement plans, and then they also looked at the strategic plan. So that's their plan for the year. And then this Monday, we have advanced ed coming in to meet with cabinet members, so they can share with us how those accreditation standards have changed. And then ANA is taking the lead this year, and they're working with the principals, and they're actually pulling out one standard specifically that they're going to work on. And it will be standard three, which is teaching and learning. And then, too, we pull that into the whole process that we have with lack team meetings. So the conversations that are occurring there are around the school improvement and the continuous improvement process. So this is just a very brief update as to what we've done with this new continuous improvement process that aligns back to the district accreditation recommendation that we had in 2012 in the strategic plan.
The ones that I've seen at LLC meetings so far, Jennifer, have been just excellent. And you can tell a lot of thought and a lot of work has gone into creating those. I can imagine trying to pull all of them, 36 schools, into and organize was quite a challenge, but it makes sense, but it's a lot of work.
But they're very school-specific. The principal really looked at, I mean, I can't imagine any two schools being the same.
Right. Hard.
Okay.
Hard to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our week in reading.
Okay, next, I think Dr. Evans has a legislative priority update or...
This is our opportunity to begin having conversation about legislative priorities for the 2014 legislative year. And these are to represent your priorities as a Board of Education. We've sort of taken an opportunity to give a first-round look at what we think some of these issues would be. So I'll just run through these very quickly. And the purpose of this presentation this evening is to get feedback from you to figure out what it is that you would like to add. If you find something in here that you disagree with, we can certainly make those adjustments and have a little time to begin to put these in place. We've continued to be a district that has been able to maximize our flexibility based on earned, basically accountability. The fact that we have agreed to higher standards to include higher student achievement measures from not only going from meeting expectations to exceeding expectations. As we look into the future, you know that there was legislation proposed last year that passed one side of our legislature that would allow for a tiered flexibility that we actually feel like we would have fared pretty well in. We've sort of given a broad priority here that, that we would encourage the legislature to look at a performance-earned flexibility and not necessarily a flexibility based on a governance model chosen. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about this as we go through this, but certainly this would be something that, that I think is a priority. And if you, as a board, agree, we can have that, continue to have that conversation. You know that over the last five years, Forsyth County Schools has had over $125 million earned under the QBE funding formula that we've not received. I've equated that to be basically representative each year of approximately 400 teaching positions.
Tell us that one more time, the, the years and the total.
Uh, over the last five years.
Five years.
$125 million during that period of time.
God, I think what we could've done with that.
In a single year's impact, I've equated that to be 400 teaching positions in any one year. Now, while we have continued to achieve at high levels and even increasing our levels of achievement, and we certainly would not necessarily be proposing getting that money back the way that it was necessarily taken away, we do feel like that there are some strategic things that we could do and that we would like to do with some restoration of those funds. And I guess one of the reasons why I've added this to our potential list for discussion is there have been some early indications that, one, the state's economy tends to be a little bit better. Reserves seemingly are up, approaching somewhere, I understand, the 400 million, half a billion dollar range. And as well as the fact that there seems to be maybe some interest at the state level in doing some restoration. Not sure that necessarily correlates to an election year coming up, but I'm sure there'll be rhetoric around that, rhetoric around that conversation. We also know that one of the things that we could take advantage of is we continue to implement greater access to digital content and a reliance on our infrastructures and our wireless networks that technology support to help us expand some things certainly would be a good targeted improvement for the school district. And you, you recall also about three years ago, the state stopped funding, exceptional growth funding for capital outlay. While no one has, since that time, has ushered the thought that they would like to necessarily restore that, it might be a unique time for us to say, okay, we are growing. We're leading the state. We're ranking among the top five school districts in the nation. We believe that has an economic development impact on our school system, on our community, but also the state. So, you know, would there be, be any interest in maybe not adopting the, the same old formula that was there, but maybe revising that? It may be at least worth a conversation. The third area, not that this would necessarily be everything, but seems to be one that there, I think, is interest in, is support in expanding technology infrastructure. Basically, to create a greater equity and opportunity for students, not just in Forsyth County Schools, but all across the state, as we think that this could be another opportunity, actually related to the priority number two as well. But we think that as important as this is for the future, that this could be something that I think merits a little bit of front-stage attention. I know that's a relatively short list, and we've got blanks easily added based on your preferences and your priorities, but this is presented to you this evening basically with the idea that it's a discussion point. We can add to, we can take away. We can test the water and then revise this as we get closer to the legislative session. We do plan to continue the same ways that we've communicated in the past to talk to our advisory committees, to include parents, teachers, about what their priorities would, would look like being. Also communicating this with our legislative delegation, but also share this with our stakeholders in print as well as electronic communications as well. During the session, we would do the things that we have done, have done in the past to include as appropriate, attending meetings in Atlanta as well as making regular reports to you and others in the district. So with that, if you have questions, input, you can affirm, correct, or take away. Where this, again, is intended to be your communications that we will help communicate to those who are policymakers at the state level.
Do you think that there's any necessity, Buster, to make a statement on Common Core? More to the point of changing course after so much time and energy, and in our case, three years, that we've spent the resources to not pass any legislation that would change course as far as curriculum goes? I know that there, Mike has been polling a lot of the superintendents and a lot of the school boards in these listing sessions, and there's overwhelming support for the Common Core pathway. But I don't know, there, there are potential legislatures that are gonna produce legislation to change or stop or whatever. And I wondered if that should be a priority on our, on behalf of our teachers.
I would say it, it would not be uncommon. In years past, we have urged the legislature to resist the temptation from, from passing legislation that mandated and are directed curriculum. I think if you, this is, again, my personal two cents worth, that if a position was taken, that it would be agnostic of any specific curriculum, but maybe be targeted to, as you point out, resisting the temptation to pass legislation that mandated and are change curriculum, that teachers are implementing in light of the fact that over the last, goodness, eight or 10 years, it seems like we've changed every two or three years and spent an enormous amount of time and resources in terms of getting the curriculum up to speed for delivery in the classroom. That would be the take, if we did take a position, I think that I would encourage us to look at.
Wasn't what Reverend Donagean also looking at legislation that would, if there was to be a change at some point, that the review process would be longer, so that the public input would be, they had more time to look at the curriculum and standards, whatever it would be, and it wouldn't go so fast? Wasn't that one of the things I think he's mentioned working on?
That I don't know, Kristen. I really don't. I know that he's taken those polls.
Which would help, which would help address that somewhat, that it would be a quick change again.
I'm not sure how they think we can keep up if they change and change.
They spend a lot of money.
I mean, really. I can't imagine them trying to change anything again already.
How do you compare the results, if you're not giving it some time to see how it is?
Well, this is, it goes beyond that, too, because Common Core is just the basics. But there's always attempt by some legislators to change the history curriculum or make science a scapegoat, where those standards have not changed over time. But, so I think a broad statement would be better to, that would cover the Common Core issue and the other, that they just need to not...
Not change.
Not change curriculum.
Stabilize it for a while.
Stabilize, right, that's a good...
I think that's one of the clear messages.
Good word.
That's what I heard through a lot of our leadership breakfast meetings we had, is they wanted to stop changing for a little while.
Right, right.
They've been through so many change. We're changing their assessment system. We're changing lots of things about them and the schools. And so they're, they're wanting to work on it and get the best, which is not a bad thing sometimes. So it might not be a possible, I mean, it might be a possible that we just say, let's stabilize for a year. Slow down on Common Core, don't make it a political platform.
If you, if you, as a board, are asking and are suggesting that we come up with something for you to consider along those lines, we'll give Jennifer a little homework for the next few days to see if she can come up with something that matches what your interest is.
Do you know, we used to have those breakfast, do you remember when we...
Right, with the legislators, yes.
Down there. Then I think there was a year or so that there was like one that could come, but, I mean, do y'all feel like that's something that we should at least check into and try? I mean, I felt almost like we had a little bit more of their attention.
Before session?
Right.
Before session starts?
Yes, it's extremely important this year because of the flexibility issue.
That's what we did, but like before, when I first came on the board, they had it. And I think we did it here, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Try to catch them.
And we would just pick out a date and send, send an invitation. And the first time, I think, a lot of them came, but then we get, I don't know, something happened and we kinda quit. But that might be something we might wanna try to do.
Well, it's very urgent, because we have to, within a year, make a decision what pathway we're going to do as a district, whether we're gonna be IE Square, Charter, or Status Quo, and all those options are getting narrowed down. And if Mike's bill, the 387 for the flexibility bill, is stuck in the Senate, if the Senate does not address that issue, we're gonna be, you know, not just us, but at least 100 more, 100-plus other districts are gonna be in a world of hurt, the ones that don't wanna go to the charter system pathway. So that, that is an issue that we absolutely need to talk to them, one-on-one, to get their support, so they fully understand where we stand.
So Jennifer, you wanna see if that's a possibility?
Yeah.
Maybe sometime first, when does the session start?
Second, second week of January, sometime in that time frame.
So either maybe the first of December or right, the first of January?
No, it has to be now. I mean...
As soon as we can, as soon as we can get something lined up.
Cause then we can also, whenever our G S B A, first weekend, week of December.
Right. Okay, just see if it's a possibility.
Only other thing that came to my mind was going back, and I'm always looking to go forward, right, and do good things and not just try to stop what, what they're doing. But the vision for public education, the only thing that sticks in my mind out of that work was pre-K and talking about what that is. And is there some area there that we keep focused on? We still may not be able to fund it, do anything with it, but where are we at in our thinking around that? We all learned, I think, from looking at our pre-K program and looking at what fun, you know, how they brought it forward in the vision for public education, saying that's a good thing. And so while we're still trying to get our K-12 funding, here we wanna talk about pre-K. And I don't know if that's a doable thing this year, but I thought I'd at least bring it up and see if it stuck anywhere.
Well, I, you know, just to add a little commentary, I do think that you're gonna see a renewed support of the statewide pre-K program. What that means is gonna differ among different counties. As you know, one of the challenges that we have is classroom space, but yet District Nine does serve, and we have some of our students here, as well as a number of private providers. But I do feel and, and believe that there is positive sentiment for continued support. It may not be real broad-based or real deep, but I think there is growing support for continuing the, the pre-K services across Georgia to as much extent as can be funded.
Well, much of it relates to funding, because another concern of mine is not only the budget, but that they quit doing all the credits to businesses that undermine the budget as a whole, not just for us, for every department in the government. But to me, it's better not to have every point, but just to keep it simple rather than, and just list the first, the only three things that we've got under funding. So much of what we need is underfunding, really.
And one other thing in that area that hits hard at home, especially this year, is our healthcare cost for our employees. That's something which, you know, we, we talk about, and we say, oh, that's gonna hurt. And then we continue on doing what we're doing. And maybe it's time to talk about what we need to do, and if there is money out there, that may be one of those areas we have to help in. And, and not have it come toward education, come toward those employees that aren't making the huge salaries that we're not able to give the raises to year after year, but are gonna get hit hard and probably percentage-wise harder than most of us in our healthcare cost. So that's something to think about and look at as we move forward and start listening to how the state of Georgia's dealing with some of this.
That's right.
Good start.
Okay, all right, thanks. We'll continue to take your feedback and incorporate it into our presentation.
Okay, next we have future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items that they want us to add?
I have one, but I'm gonna talk about it next week. I think we'll wait till another future time.
Okay, you wait for a future, future agenda?
Wait for a future, yeah. We've got enough right now, so.
Okay.
I've got something working that I'd like to talk about.
Do I have a motion then that we go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kristen and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous. Motion by Kristen and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous.